All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on this day, the sixth day of February 2023. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Becker, O'Flaherty.
Here.
Pina Graham, Stoker.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Maxwell, Vice Chair McMahon.
Here.
For present.
All right, beautiful. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda that has been submitted to us. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Wright to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Seconded by Stoker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the agenda has been passed. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for an approval of the minutes from last meeting. So is there somebody willing to make a motion to approve them a minutes as they have been presented to us in our packets from the last meeting?
I move to approve as submitted.
We have a motion on the floor by O'Flaherty to accept the minutes.
Seconded.
Seconded by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. The motion passes. This portion of the meeting is the public participation portion of the meeting. This part of the meeting is for anybody from the public wishing to speak about items that are not on the agenda. If there is anybody in the public that wishes to speak about an item that is not on the agenda from tonight, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, is this not regarding tonight's meeting? This is regarding the Candid Spirit?
Yes.
So you're going to come later. No, you're going to, you're going to come-
Time to talk during that.
Yep. This, this part of the meeting is for items not on the agenda. So I'm going to call you later on.
Oh, okay.
All right. Seeing nobody here who wants to talk about items that are not on the agenda, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting and I'm going to open up a public hearing. So at this time, at 6:04 PM on February 6th, I'm going to open up a public hearing that's in front of us. It's a petition by Candid Spirit II LLC, represented by Crystal Anderson, for the approval of a special use permit for cannabis business establishment, a cannabis dispensary, at 305 East Locust Street. Is there a candidate from the audience that wants to make a presentation? Come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Nikia McAdoo. You said my address as well?
Yes, please.
172 East Oneida Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois, 60126.
What was your first name?
Nikia McAdoo.
Welcome, Nikia.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to introduce ourselves to you and our company to you. We are happy to have found a home here in DeKalb and we look forward to partnering with you. I'm Nikia McAdoo, a founding partner of Candid Spirit and Exile Leaf. I'm here tonight with another founding partner, Crystal Anderson. We've also brought with us tonight a member from our construction team, Marty McDonald, as well as our security team, Ed Bernia. Candid Spirit was conceived by three nurses and a veteran partner who saw thriving medical cannabis community with little involvement from healthcare professionals. We believe that advocacy, education, and the dispensing of trusted products from trusted sources is what the industry needs to continue to move towards full legalization and removing the outdated and unfounded stigmas attached to this plant medicine. As anesthesia providers, we have over 60 collective years of serving patients in a safe and effective manner. We educate, advocate, titrate, and dispense medications every day. So it's easy to see where our passion for the cannabis industry comes from. It's just what we do. In 2020, when we first learned that we had won a dispensary license in the Northwest region, we set our sights on finding a community that would welcome us as small business owners, women, and nurses. It didn't take us long to realize that DeKalb is where we wanted to open our first door. We saw a thriving community with new industry at the Chicago West Business Center, an outstanding university, Go Huskies, home to the DeKalb Corn Fest, and yet no dispensary within 35-mile radius. That means that those who need or want legal cannabis are taking their dollars outside of this community. It also means that clients are seeking understanding and education about cannabis, also outside of this community, if at all. We believe that we can do better, and that is why we're here today. I just want to take a few minutes to point out a few key points before we move forward. We won our license in the Northwest Illinois region, which includes DeKalb. I think, yeah, you can flip to that slide. You'll see there on that illustration where the current dispensaries are, and that, that highlighted area is the dispensary closest to DeKalb, but you can see there's pretty much nothing in, in the area. We've also included our address and request for extension from the state, which was also approved for this area. As we go through the plans, you'll be seeing the building modifications we have made that include an ADA accessible ramp at the front entrance of the building. We are allowed by the state to open for hours, for the hours of 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Our plan is to open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We remain flexible with the hours depending on the demand from the community. The dispensary will not allow anyone who is not at least 21 years of age on the premises or employ anyone under the age of 21. As a convenience to our customers, we offer an in-store ATM for cash withdrawal. There are also several cashless options that are becoming available to customers that we, that we are considering before we open. We currently have an adult-use license. However, we will honor and serve the medicinal population as well. We plan to use an online platform that will allow customers to navigate quickly through the purchase experience. They will be able to search for their products, find their items, add it to the basket, come to the store with their order number, and purchase and the product once identification is verified. This will help with overcrowding in the store and prevent long lines outside of the store. We will maintain a discreet storefront and signage in accordance with the state and local requirements. The dispensary will not operate in a manner that causes, creates, or allows the public viewing of cannabis, cannabis paraphernalia, or similar products from any sidewalk right away or any property other than the lot on which the cannabis business establishment is located. No portion of the exterior of our cannabis business establishment shall use or contain any flashing lights, searchlights, spotlights, or any similar lighting system that would be a distraction to the community. Signage shall comply with the standards of the underlying zoning district. You can see here an inside drawing, rendering, of what we plan to have our internal space look like. And I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Nikia.
Mm-hmm.
Staff, do you have a report for us?
Yes. Staff reporting your packet and very thorough review by Nikia on the applicant and what they like to do. The site at 305 East Locust, an aerial photo here of the site. Its zoning is a central business district, CBD, and that district cannabis dispensaries are a special use permit, and they're also special uses in a couple of the commercial districts and our industrial district also. So we have standards in the UDO for these special uses. As mentioned, they're issued a license by Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation in Region 14, and that is the area of Northwest Illinois. Includes DeKalb County as an area to the west. Since that time, the DeKalb County's been moved to Region 5, which includes the Chicago metropolitan area, but the applicants indicated they, their application at that time was Region 14, DeKalb, and Northwest Illinois. The, they also have two other licenses, not a cannabis dispensary, but they have a craft grower license and adult-use transporter license through the state. In the UDO, we do have a few setback requirements for cannabis dispensaries. 250 feet, they must be, at least, from a nursery school, preschool, primary, secondary school, daycare center, daycare home, or an academic building, or residence hall of a state university, which they comply with all those. None of those uses within 250 feet. The Minot Building to the south, owned by NIU and housing the Center for Governmental Studies, is a considered research outreach facility. It's not a, they don't have routine classes there. It's not an academic building. So they meet all the requirements. The building recently, the most recent housed a credit unit. It was DeKalb County Credit Unit for many years, and then Vibrant Credit Union. They left about a year and a half ago, so it's been vacant for a little over a year and a half at that location. Applicant provided a site plan, showed some parking to the east of the building. It's a paved area currently. They're going to accommodate three spaces and a handicap space. The one-way on the north side, they can't have a one-way, so that's going to be removed, and that would be just a one-way access out to North Third Street. There'll be some improvements to the front of the building. As you can see, there are steps that go on the front door, so to make it handicap accessible, they'll be doing some work there. Along Locust Street, it's a 10-foot-wide public walk. They're going to use four feet up in stairs, be added to the front door. That will leave six-foot-wide area remained for the public walk. Terms of parking, the site is in the area of downtown that doesn't require parking. But looking at the one block each way, a four-block area, there are approximately 340 public or semi-public parking spaces. That can be public parking lot, public parking on the street, or parking for the library. So there's adequate parking in the surrounding area. And they all almost, or will likely apply for, to help fund the ramp in the front, a AIP grant through the city, which is through the TIP district. They'll help pay for some of those costs. They haven't applied yet, but they're eligible to do so. As stated, the hours in the UDO is 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. They're indicating they go 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. One of the conditions, they're going to have a security plan in place. If you recall, when we reviewed the cannabis dispensary on the junction, that was heavy state requirements regarding security and such. And they'll have to come up with a plan with our police department prior to opening that meets their satisfaction. As noted, the location on a West Lincoln Highway approved originally in 2020. They got a couple of extensions. They didn't get a state license. I understand they do have, told by them, they have a license in the new Region 5, which covers the Chicago area, so they probably be coming forward to the city in the near future. In the UDO, we allow up to five cannabis dispensaries in the city. That was part of the amendment a few years ago, so we have plenty more for additional ones. Any special use, we have the findings of fact. Would comply with all the standards of the CBD district and the UDO. It will not be detrimental to surrounding properties. There's a variety of retail, commercial offices in the surrounding area. Conditions requiring that they have to meet the police department approval with the plan, meets the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. While the condition is also recommended to prohibit any cannabis consumption on the proposed tenant space, in the proposed tenant space unless an amendment to the special use is obtained. Granting of the special use will not dominate or mediate area, not prevent development. It's pretty much developed already in the surrounding area, of course. Adequate utilities already provided to the site. They'll provide about four parking spaces onsite, and there are about 340 public spaces in the surrounding area. And finally, the will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. It'd be a benefit to the community, additional revenue, and a fit of need that's, a health need that's in the community. This would be the first dispensary in the county. As of the, tonight, we haven't received any written comments from the public. The recommendation is to approve. I prepared a sample motion that is ready to be read. It proves the special use permit. There's a floor plan there, too. They're going to initially take up about 75% of the floor area. There's a future retail area at the southeast portion of the tenant space. That would be for future use of selling of cannabis products, et cetera. And the two conditions, as I noted, they have to, no onsite consumption unless they amend the special use permit, and a safety plan has to be approved with the police department. And Exhibit A is the site plan that shows the general work that will occur along Locust Street for the ramp. The parking also includes a dumpster. There'll be screen, three spaces, and then a one-way out to Third Street. So that is Exhibit A to the approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan. At this point of the meeting, this is the public participation form. I have a request from Dwayne Brown. So come and address. Dwayne, will you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
Dwayne Brown, 520 Prospect. In 2016, I gave a speech to the city council to approve a medical cannabis dispensary for Justice Groan and Jamil Taylor to be located on Peace Road and Pleasant Street. It was approved by the city council, eight to nothing. This was when Mayor John Ray was in office. The state never granted them a license, so it didn't open. There have been others since then that wanted to open a shop downtown and in the Junction Shopping Center. All were denied state licenses. This is unfair that the cities such as Rockford, Chicago, Addison, Algonquin, and other suburbs have them and we don't. The state has been biased in the manner in which they issue licenses. We now have a proposal by Exile Leaf Dispensary, who already have a state license to open a shop at 305 East Locust, the former Vibrant Credit Union and GE Union building. It was a good, it is a good location with abundant parking and easy access. DeKalb has needed a medical dispensary for years, and recreational cannabis is legal for all those 21 and older. This needs to be approved immediately and sent to the city council for approval. DeKalb has lost too much tax revenue already. As I understand it, this will generate $200,000 per year. We have been denied by the city playing politics with this since they legalized cannabis. It is overdue, and I ask your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Is there anybody else from the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no other from the audience, I'm going to close the public portion of this public hearing at 6:20 PM. I'm going to open it up to the commission members for questions. Does anybody have any questions for Nikia or Dan?
I have a question. So just the location of where this is, that is right by where the Corn Fest carnival is? Is that, is this going to impact the location of that carnival at all?
Yeah, we made the applicants aware of that, that there'll be, you know, rides and entrance into the ride area right on Third Street there. So they're fully aware of that, and the police will work with them and the committee, you know, leading up to that time. So they're aware of that.
But do you, do you see yourself objecting to that? If, like, your parking lots closed?
All right.
Mr. Brown just said that there would be $200,000 in revenue. Can you say something to your projections for this project? What do you, what do you see in the forthcoming year?
You know, I could get you some more exact numbers with projections about tax revenue. I would have to look at that a little bit more closely. But I'll tell you that the state of Illinois made $1.5 billion last year, $144 million in the month of December alone. And so, I mean, I think most communities have proven that there is a great benefit to having these dispensaries in their community, and the tax revenue that it generates is just one of those benefits.
Do, how many employees do you anticipate having?
We anticipate having 10 full-time employees initially, and additional 10 part-time employees. That doesn't include the security personnel that will also be on hand each day from open to close. So at least 20 employees to start. That also doesn't include ourselves, which we will also be onsite to work as well.
Right. And Dan also mentioned there was a future retail space in there. Is that going to be connected to Candid Spirit II?
Yes. That, that's a space that we have designated to sell merchandise related to cannabis products, as well as clothing merchandise with our logo. So we will use that. In addition, we'll use that space and set it up almost as an education and an event space as well for those coming in wanting to listen to seminars about the use, safe use of cannabis, different things like that.
Thank you.
I have a few concerns about this location. You know, in our UDO, it says a cannabis establishment is going to be 250 feet from the property line of a nursery school, a preschool, primary school, or a secondary school, or daycare center. None of those are there now, but just north of the parking lot where you're going to have is Just for Kicks. And Just for Kicks is, it's a dance studio where, and their clientele is preschool and grade school kids that are dancing. So we wouldn't put this near a daycare center. We wouldn't put it near their nursery school, but we're going to put it right across the parking lot from Just for Kicks, where all those kids are going to be after school. I have another concern. You know, I appreciate you addressing the issue of the Minot Building not being a classroom building, but really, classes are offered there. If you Google, if you go and check it out, you can, you can sign up for OSHA safety classes. I know it's not freshman biology, but there are classes that are offered in that building there. And it is a state university building, and that building is staffed by graduate students that come to Northern Illinois University. So for, if the spirit of our UDO is to keep this away from young kids, if it's to keep it away from students, we're kind of violating that. You know, even though that's not a classroom building, the students are there. Another concern I have is Debutante School of Cosmetology is right across the street, kitty corner from there. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't put this, you know, near a KEC program. We wouldn't put it near a high school, but high school seniors and kids that are graduating from school that don't want to go the four-year route, that want to go to a trade school to get a cosmetology license, are going to be parking north of your building and walking to their classroom every day. You know, so if the spirit of the UDO is, let's put this 250 yards away from these issues, I think we're violating that with what we're doing here tonight. So I do have some concerns. You know, another concern I have is, and I kind of addressed this to Dan, and I would like, maybe Bill, you can give me some answer on this. But if we say yes to this, if this is approved, and there's a cannabis dispensary at this location there, what happens to the value of the properties around? What happens to 215 North Fourth Street? You know, that's Chuck Shepard's building there, and it used to be, he used to rent that to NIU for the art gallery. So haven't we adversely affected his, the value of his building? Because he can't get that tenant back.
A few things. The initial setup with the setbacks to NIU academic buildings and residence halls, tent on the academic buildings was buildings on campus was the intent, and for buildings that routinely had all just classrooms, it wasn't meant for a place like the Center for Governmental Studies, which may have classes occasionally, but it's routinely, the main focus is offices and research there. The dance studio to the north, it's not listed as, you know, the intent was trying to keep it from nursery schools and, you know, daycare centers and schools. And these operations, if you see in other communities, are very safe with the security measures they have, and the applicant can speak probably more on this, but they're very heavily regulated by the state. You can't be smoking outside there. People are going to go and they're going to leave. So these operate pretty well than other communities. They're in locations with other commercial buildings and operate very safely. So we don't, there's no violation of setbacks, we've determined.
Okay, I agree with you that it's a clean industry. It's going to be safe. There's going to be security.
And with the issue of the other use, that particular building, I don't think a daycare, those particular two uses, I don't, there's no pickup area, there's no outdoor player areas. I don't see that type of use going in that particular building. And I know, it doesn't, it's not going to devalue any of the surrounding buildings, because the uses that are in the setback are so limited, there's so many other commercial uses. I don't see any devaluation of any surrounding buildings.
I appreciate that. I'm going to disagree. Go ahead, Bill.
You'll probably disagree with this then, too. So cannabis, under the conditions explained tonight, is legal in the state of Illinois, and so is alcohol consumption. And there are age limits, obviously. You have to be 21 in both cases to drink or to purchase the cannabis. And, and we can all cite examples of people over, overindulging probably in both cases. But in this case, what's being proposed is a highly secure environment for the purchase of, a lot more secure than liquor establishments downtown. And we have a number of those, and you used to operate one, and in the downtown area, right in the heart of downtown, I should say. And, and even, just as close as Chuck Shepard's building is really what, it's a new place, sells Mexican food at Third and Lincoln, and has outdoor dining where you can just hand a bottle of beer to somebody walking by. So I think in this case, we have a more secure, and probably in terms of per square foot value to the, to the sales and to the commercial property downtown, probably a higher earner. So if we can protect people going in there from abusing, certainly on the premises, and abusive people from getting in there who are bent on mischief, I think it's a safe bet. And, and I wouldn't be saying this if it was just theoretical. I've been to places now, places that are legally licensed in the state of Illinois, both at the local and the state level, in Rockford, in Neboville, and in other places, and they're very secure. I mean, you don't get in there unless you get turned upside down and get your pants shaken. So you've got to show lots of ID, and while you're in there, you're in a secure environment. So I think it's just going to be fine. It's going to be quiet. Now, one thing I heard in the last couple of weeks, what if there's a, what if there's a lot of cars? And so that was addressed early on, you know, at different times of the day, there is an abundance of places. Some people don't like to walk a block, but within a block, there's a lot of places. So I feel better about that than I do trying to find a place to park anytime after 5:00 PM on the south side of Lincoln Highway. I know that, because I try to when I go to work at night and I can't get, get a place. So I'm feeling pretty good about this, Bill, and I, I wouldn't be saying that if I wasn't. And you know, I'm, I'm pretty straight.
I agree. I appreciate that. You know, but I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm worried about the crime that's going to happen or anything like that. I'm, I'm looking at our UDO, and if we have in our UDO that we are not going to allow this within 250 feet of these businesses, and then you have to come to us for a public hearing, then we, as commissioners, have an obligation. Is this in the spirit of our UDO? And I think this location's not.
So the spirit of your UDO is, I suppose, in the eyes of the beholder. As a person who has often taken things to you and to the council for review in the, in the UDO, and we have an agenda tonight which has some of that, I think what we try to do is to articulate very specifically what the law is, because the spirit of the law is not what ends up in court. It's the letter of the law. And the letter of the law right now is in support of this particular project. Spirit of the law, we could have a long discussion about that. And, and the good thing is that we have a democratic process like this, that when we feel that the spirit's being abused in some way, then people have a chance to come in and voice their opinion, and then we can go to the council, and they can likewise weigh in. And I, I am encouraged by that as a, as a barrier against nonsensical things.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
I would just add to that. Everyone has spoken so eloquently. I don't, I don't have a lot to add to that, but I hear your concerns and I respect your concerns. As a mother and a nurse, I understand what you're saying. I want to assure you that we plan for this to be a very well-run-
I want to assure you that we plan for this to be a very well-run, discreetly outfitted building. It should not at all interfere with what's going on at the dance studio. We don't, we hope not to, you know, be a distraction to anything in the community. We also have seen in other areas where these businesses have added value, I know you mentioned that, have added value to the other businesses in the area, and those other businesses in, they appreciate the increased customer base and their businesses getting noticed because of the patronage to the cannabis businesses. So I, you know, have seen it happen in other communities. I understand where your concerns are coming from, but it can be done very well.
Thank you.
Can I ask, while you're there? What, 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 what do you do to promote the business? What is your PR plan? I know that probably people are going to find it, but you know, I just wanted to know since it's, you know, seems so discreet, everything seems so discreet, no, you know, nothing overtly signed out.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that, because the state is very clear that we have very strict rules on how we are to advertise. There is a lot of word of mouth. We are allowed some signage within the local regulations and state regulations. We have to make sure we uphold those. Internet, digital, social media is another way in which we advertise. And then it's just about word of mouth and building a client base through that is mainly. We do a lot of workshops. We talk about cannabis a lot and the safe use of cannabis, and so that draws a lot of our customer base as well. So that's, that's pretty much what we've done so far to advertise.
I have a question for you. You know, I'm a bartender, some Basset certified. Do you have to go through any certification so that if, you know, I need to be able to tell if I have to cut off Trixie? Is there, do your employees have to go through anything to be able to tell, oh, I shouldn't be selling to so-and-so right now?
So the state mandates what the limits are for Illinois residents as well as for non-Illinois residents. And so that information is kept digitally. You can, you're only allowed to buy so much. This is not for consumption within the store. It has to leave the store packaged in an unsealed, I mean, unbroken seal on the packaging, so it's not used at all on the premises. So customers coming into the store, if they're inebriated, or if they are high from whatever substance they're using, we definitely would counsel them on, you know, what their issue is and would not sell to them. But as far as how much they can purchase, we're limited in how much we can sell Illinois residents as well as non-Illinois residents.
So is it a certification that all your employees have to go through?
We all have to go through a certification, yes. We all have.
Training every, it's like eight-hour training course.
Yes.
And they have to get a license or renews every year. So before we onboard, onboard them, before they, other employees, they go to training, and while they're employed, they still, you still have to train them. And the training is done.
Through a state-certified training as well.
vendors. It's also done on a, like a quarterly basis, but in our application, we have to submit to the state how I train, who we were trained, how, and the vendors that we use, and how often we're training our employees. So yes, they are trained. They're trained to identify people who can consume, who cannot consume, how much should be spent, you know, and the rule of regulations on either the SOPs of our institution are administered itself.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, the commission's discussed this item, so I'm going to ask if there's a motion anybody wants to make on this item.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of a special use permit for a cannabis business establishment, cannabis dispensary, at 305 East Locust Street, as shown on-site plan dated January 9th, 2023, labeled as Exhibit A, and subject to the following. One, there shall be no onsite consumption of cannabis in tenant space as shown on Exhibit A without an amendment to the special use permit. Two, the applicant shall comply with the restrictions of Article 7.18 of the Unified Development Ordinance for cannabis business establishments, and have an approved security plan with the police department prior to a final certificate of occupancy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from O'Flaherty. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Stoker. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. Very good. Wish you the best of luck in your next year proceedings. And that will conclude this portion of the meeting. The next item on our agenda is another public hearing. So at this point, I have to open a second public hearing. I'm going to open this public hearing at 6:38 PM on Monday, February 6th. And this public hearing is a petition by the City of DeKalb for text amendments to Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, of the municipal code, code to amend Article 12 Off-Street Parking, loading and storage requirements of the UDO regarding design, landscaping, parking setback, and locational requirements, minimum parking space requirements, and other miscellaneous amendments. Is there a staff report for this?
Yes, you have a, this is a city-initiated text amendment to the parking regulation. Been working on this for a while. It's pretty comprehensive, a lot of cleanup, a lot of miscellaneous amendments. So I'll go through a summary of the more substantial changes, but in general, none of the amendments are more strict. We tried to look at this and not make it more strict for unnecessary reasons. And also, we wanted to induce a lot of flexibility in the regulations in terms of particularly landscaping, where they can be planted, and give some flexibility to staff regarding some of the regulations. So let me run through the summary. First one, and I have Zach Gill, our city engineer, is here. Had a lot to do with some of the language, particularly with alternate surfaces and stormwater drainage, so he can certainly answer any questions, too. One of, the First Amendment proposed is allowing alternate surfaces like chip seal for, these are areas primarily devoted to storage, parking areas, or storage areas, really mostly industrial areas that are behind a building that are for truck storage areas, not accessible to the public. The current ordinance allows, pretty much dictates it's got to be paved or asphalt to concrete with certain depth, just like the parking lot. So we've approved a few, I think, in the past, either through planned development or such, or approval through staff. So we wanted to document it, get it codified here. So we would allow this alternate service as approved by the city engineer with the filing conditions, permitted in the general commercial and the light industrial, heavy industrial districts only, so not like in a residential where we allow the alternate surface. That area can't be accessible to the general public, so it's usually going to be gated behind the building, can't be within 50 feet from a residential zoned area. And the storage area cannot be closer to the street than the principal building, meaning it can't be like in the front yard. So kind of behind the building, public's not going there. Be an alternate surface as approved by the city engineer, something that, you know, something beyond just gravel or dirt can't be that, of course, but something that's a little, not as expensive, something where, you know, the heavier vehicles could handle, but something that may not add to the stormwater drainage requirements on that. Anything else on that, Zach? Want to mention?
No.
Second area, location of parking facilities. We do a lot currently, the commercial uses, if you can't provide all the parking on your site, you can park within 300 feet of your property if you have an agreement with an adjacent landowner. But we didn't have that for apartments, sororities, fraternities, or rooming houses, so we thought that should be added, too. Makes sense, particularly with the tight parking in some of those areas. It's, I think it's appropriate to, if you don't, can't provide all the parking, to maybe use some parking next door, as long as they have extra, and then you have agreement between the two. So we're adding that. Also proposing some changes in the setbacks for parking and curbing. We require six inch curbing now and all-new parking. This has come up a few times, particularly when there's additional parking onto an existing parking lot, particularly a smaller parking lot that doesn't have any curbing, then to add the parking, to put curbing in that, for that portion, doesn't really make sense. So the key is alternate method for stormwater. It's all related to stormwater. We did this with the First Nine Methodist Church on Annie Glynn where they, their parking lot, because they provided some different stormwater. There's no curbing around most of that parking lot, because they did show that stormwater could be handled without having the curbing there. So we wanted to just have that ability to do that, some alternate stormwater control per the city engineer's approval. Also a change in the setbacks, we require five-foot interior setbacks, yard setbacks for any parking. But occasionally, we have, usually apartment areas, there are smaller parking lots where they have a certain number of spaces. They want to add like three or four spaces and to have that parking five-foot setback when the existing parking is maybe a foot off this property line, it doesn't make sense to have it kind of different setbacks. It kind of screws up the parking and the design and the whole accessibility of the parking spaces. So with five or fewer spaces, we allow that flexibility to put the parking right, no closer to where the existing parking is, so it's all even. Driveways, a budding in alley take up 80% of the lot width. So currently, we allow, we have a regulation that, I think it's intended just for the front, but it's not clear. Driveways from a street, you can take a maximum 40% of the lot width. So if you have a 100-foot lot, you can have a driveway 40-foot wide. That's kind of extreme, but 40%. That kind of applies to the alley, too, although it doesn't really say it. So we want to put a provision in for alleys. Now, alleys are not as aesthetically pleasing, so to speak, as the front of the house, so we're proposing that the driveway to the alley take up 80%, no more than 80% of the lot width. And we do see that quite a bit. If you drew some of the older sections of town down the alleys, many driveways are wider than that, so I think it was interpreted different. So we want to codify that, get that clear in the ordinance, what can be done along alleys, how much, how wide your driveway can be. Landscaping standards in the parking regulations, that's where they're at in terms of landscaping around all parts of a parking lot. One of the current standards we have on the front with the yard fronting a street is landscape screening that requires landscape bushes and trees, and also berming, three-foot I berm both of it on the front yard. So we only have a 10-foot setback for parking along a front, and to put a berm and some landscape plantings in there is very difficult. So if you have 50, 60-foot, it's a lot easier. So we're suggesting that it's one or the other, the berm or the landscaping to screen the front. Now, many of the larger sites come in as planned developments, and that gives the opportunity for the commission to kind of look at the landscaping, to see if that's meet your criteria or not, or if it's something that requires berming and landscaping, that's something you can kind of look at and decide. Also, the flexibility to landscaping in the, we require that in all yards of a property. But when we get properties like industrial that we have landscaping in the side yard next to another industrial property, and maybe another yards next to a commercial area, not very intense, or apartments maybe, is it perhaps take some of that landscaping, not reduce the quantity, but maybe some of that landscaping next to the industrial, take some of that landscaping and maybe move it some other place in the lot where it makes more sense. So we are looking for language to allow the staff to make that up to 50% to maybe move it elsewhere in the site where it's needed a little bit more. Sharing a parking, that's something that we wanted to add to the ordinance. We'd currently allow that for churches. So we get a couple of uses that have different hours of operation. Put in some language of proposing that they can share the parking up to 25%. So say we have two uses that require 20 spaces each, that's 40 total, and it's found that they operate at different times, and they'd have to show that to the staff. They will only be required to have 30. So not the full percent, but that would help in a couple of uses that have differing hours of operation. And avoid doing unnecessary amount of pavement on a site. Next section deals with the parking requirements based on the use, and this was in the comp plan where we did a couple of statements in the comp plan we approved last August about taking, making sure the number of spaces we require actually meets that particular demand for that use, and have things changed over time. And so we looked at, one of them was restaurants. So currently, right now, it's one space for every two seats plus one space for every employee on the maximum shift. Proposing to change that to one space for every three seats plus one space for every employee on the max shift. This kind of came up with Raising Canes initially, where they had 94 indoor seats, 26 outdoor seats, and 15 employees that required 76 spaces, and they're proposing 46. So there's quite a difference. They provided a study of their other locations, and they knew how much parking they needed. They certainly didn't want to provide a parking lot that wouldn't accommodate their customers, and they would leave. So I think the issue there was the outdoor seats were counted, so we have language that doesn't include outdoor seating, seasonal seating in the parking rig. It's only indoors, so people are usually sitting in either one, not both. So I think that was part of the issue. And this loosened up the parking requirement based on the seats. Dry-through traffic last few years since COVID has certainly taken off, so there's less demand for parking for the indoor patrons we're seeing. So we think this change will accommodate. And again, with these parking regulations, these are just minimum spaces you have. It doesn't prohibit the owner from adding more spaces if they want. The other area was multifamily. We currently require one and a half spaces for efficiency in one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, two and a half spaces are required. Looking at past projects that we've done, Pappas Development, particularly Plaza DeKalb, Isaac Suites, Agora Tower, Arista Residence, were looked at. I talked to Mr. Pappas, he indicated actual demand they're seeing is around 1.25 spaces per unit. So we're recommending a 1.33, a little bit less, but not down to 1.25. So we feel comfortable that that will actually meet the demand and not require more spaces than they actually want or need. Again, if they want more, that's fine. These are just minimum. Also, for Greek housing, group homes, lodging houses, current capacity is one space for each occupant based on the licensed capacity of the building. Many fraternity sororities are not full, there's, they're not filling up their parking lots, so we're proposing that to be reduced to 0.85 spaces per occupant. When the Sigma Nu fraternity on Black Hawk was rezoned, PDR in 2017, we granted a parking waiver based on their actual needs. It wasn't too far off. 45 were required, we, they provided 42, that waiver was granted. So in looking at other fraternities, we talked to some property managers and make sure they're comfortable with this, and they have been. So we propose that to go down to 0.85. So those are the, there's other several little miscellaneous changes, too, in there. You could certainly cover those if you want, but those were the more substantial ones, and we'd recommend approval. Sample motion is prepared. Happy to answer your questions, or Zach had a lot to do with some of the language, too.
Dan, I will speak to it real quick, if the commission doesn't mind. This is thrilling stuff, right? This is actually more from an engineering standpoint, a philosophical exercise. We're trying to avoid these all-or-nothing scenarios that would take away from investment or interfere with improvements that people would like to make. And when I mean all or nothing, I'm talking about someone who maybe wants to redevelop a small lot, some sort of entrepreneurial business. Okay, right now, the UDO says, go get current, put down three inches of asphalt. They don't have the $27,000 to do that. But they may be more than happy to come up with the $5,500, you know, dollars.
But they may be more than happy to come up with the fifty-five hundred, you know, dollars to have a, a local operation, chip seal that. And then what we are doing is a lot that now has a gravel lot that they are grandfathered in to be able to use would be willing to upgrade that to at least a steel-coated surface where we're cutting down on that dust, even allowing them to, you obviously can't paint gravel, right, but you could, could paint stalls, lot lines, ADA things on a chip seal, lot, things of that nature, and the fact that a lot of it is the backroom storage. So I think we're giving people that ability to take step A and not saying, you better be at Z, right? So that's part of what, and the same, same thing with the drainage. We've, we've come into this where no one wants to go rip down three feet into the earth to pour, bury your curb around their whole lot, when they can do things, though, to make sure they're not inundating their neighbor during times of runoff, whether that's with berms or ditches or other small things. So again, it's basically a philosophical thing. Uh, I appreciate the discretion to do that, but at the reading of the ordinance currently, I was not given that discretionary authority by the city council, so we would feel much more comfortable at staff level to be given the authority to use that discretion in, uh, in those situations, so that's why we brought this forward, so.
Thank you, Zach. Is there any more presentation from the city?
No.
Okay. At this point in the meeting, I'm gonna ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak on this item. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, uh, participation of this, the public hearing at six fifty-three P M. And I'm gonna open it up for the commission members to, for comments, questions.
I like the addition of, um, flexibility to all these things, 'cause I, I do think that on a site-by-site basis, some things make sense, some things don't make sense, and having the flexibility to say, no, really, this place, this space, you know, we need you to do more, or, or, no, we can make these compromises. I think that, um, I think that makes a lot of good sense. Anything that prevents people from having to jump through a ton of hoops, especially when, when you can take a look at, at each lot and say, no, this makes sense for that, that doesn't. I, I think those are all good things, and especially because if there's anything that's, that's quite different, it would have to come before, before us or council or something like that, so I, I think it lets you guys do, um, do your jobs more efficiently.
I think so, too. I, I think just speaking from my, my perspective, you know, I counted up on, if, if I'm required to have these parking spots, the restaurant portion of my facility would require that whole parking lot. It would require all seventy-five spots there. And that just is not the case. I mean, I, I need, I need my lot and then some when I have banquets and stuff, but just as a restaurant, I think the change you're making is good there. You know, you changed in, uh, in two thousand seventeen when the Sigma Nu fraternity was rezoned. Is there anybody, any, has there been any issues since then?
No, we have not heard from them or any complaints. I've driven by a handful of times, you know, over the years, I've not noticed, uh,
So I think it's a.
I've noticed open parking over there still, so.
So it's, I think that we're going in the right direction there, you know, and then with Mr. Pappas, and if he says one point two-five, he's gonna have, we're gonna find out, if he can get by with one point two-two-five and you go to one point three-three, I think you're.
He doesn't want a place where the residents can't park, so he's kind of got a good formula. We're just pretty close to that, just a little bit more, so we're comfortable with that.
Any other questions, comments for city staff? If there are no questions or comments, does anybody care to make a motion on this issue?
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding the parking regulations as indicated in Exhibit A of the staff report.
We have a motion on the floor from Stoker. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a second from Jerry Wright. All right, we have a second from Wright. Clerk, please call the roll.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, that concludes that portion of the meeting. What's next on our agenda? Next on our agenda is staff reports.
Yeah, just a few things. Next meeting is Tuesday, February twenty-first. We have a holiday, Presidents' Day on twentieth, so Tuesday, the twenty-first, uh, one hearing so far, one item, agenda item. Eleven oh four, eleven oh six Lewis Street. It's a duplex. We had one like this in, um, Chamberlain Drive last year, uh, the way they want to split the lot. So that's a special use permit. They have a minor subdivision plat, one of the lots is a little under the minimum lot area, 'cause the home was not put on the middle of the lot, so they have a variance, too, so that's the one item we'll have on their next meeting. We handed out, uh, some amendments to Chapter twenty-one. That's the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, a chapter out of the Municipal Code. All the commissions had some changes, uh, and these are just pretty straightforward, simple. We have the O M A. Training, which you've been doing anyway, that is codified. The compensation, which we dealt with last year is addressed, and also the, uh, time limit. That's for the public participation, the non-agenda items, limited to three minutes, so if we do get anybody speaking there, it's limited to three. That will match what the council's doing and the other commissions. So just wanted to get you a latest copy of that. Last, uh, council meeting in January there, they did approve the retail tobacco store for nine oh one Lucinda. That went through the commission. And just an update, the, uh, city, uh, council approved the selling of the old post office at Grove Street and South Fourth Street, three thirty Grove, and also the building south, which is city-owned also, two seventeen South Fourth Street. To Pappas Development, he plans on demolishing the old post office and doing some type of dry-through there, so that will come to the commission down the road. And retaining two seventeen South Fourth, Fourth Street to do some interior remodeling and, and keep that, this rent, too, for offices, so. And, um, I don't know the details, but the senior center in there, they did find a new home.
Oh, good.
Good.
All right. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. I have a question. Uh, any, any developments on when we had that hundred and forty-foot food and beverage facility over next to the Amazon Distribution Center? Is there any progress with that?
They, uh, have scaled back their, uh, phase one square footage, but as far as we understand, they're still going forward. It's the first phase, a little bit smaller. Still have the same height.
Okay.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
All right.
Okay.
All right. While we're done with staff reports, the next thing I have to ask for is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn by Wright on the floor.
I second.
Second in by O'Flaherty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Good night, everybody.